I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
We got a little, something special here. We got some recognition for some of our outgoing employees. First one here, would like to recognize Kim Points. From the citizens of Grant, appreciation of Kim Points, the recognition of valuable contributions to city administration for 20 years. On behalf of everyone, Kim, I'd like to thank you for all you've done. You did a lot in 20 years. You did a lot for the city. You brought us through some tough times. And that was appreciated by myself and everyone else here for the work you've done. So I'll give this to you.
Thank you.
And here we also have a plaque for you.
Reads the same, from citizens of Grant and appreciation of Sharon Schwartz, in recognition of valuable contributions as treasurer for 15 years of service. You kept us in the black this entire 15 years. So, thank you. We wish you best in your future endeavors, both of you.
And before I forget, I have these boxes. Oops, sorry, Nancy.
That's okay.
You can put those in there, so if you put it in your bag or something.
They don't get scratched.
Put you back in place, Sharon. Both on our ways. I'm going to resist upside down.
Testing her puzzling skills.
All right, next on the agenda, approval of the regular agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the regular agenda?
I will move to approve the regular agenda. A second.
We can all say aye.
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 Approval of consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Staff agenda items. First of all, can you guys hear in the back, okay? I know Jeff, you had said before that, and I, just a clarification, we don't have any amplified. I had thought that that speaker was amplifying our mics, but this is, so if you can't hear us, just ask us to speak up louder. All right, so Brad, we have the consideration of 17 and 36 working hours. This was tabled during the last meeting with some follow-ups requested from you, Brad. If you could, just please provide us an update from what you learned since the last meeting.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to discuss the proposed working hours for the Washington County lead improvement project at Lake Elmo Avenue and Highway 36. As you know, this is a major two-year project scheduled for substantial completion by the fall of 2027. The first construction season must deliver the, or at least one of the bridges over Highway, on Highway 36 over Lake Elmo Avenue to carry the traffic during the second season. And to meet this milestone, the county is requesting extended working hours in the construction contract. Under our current noise control ordinance, heavy equipment can operate Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The county is asking or requesting working hours on Monday through Friday, 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. On Saturdays, from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And on Sundays, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Now, these extended hours will hopefully improve the project efficiency and help meet deadlines, reduce disruption for residents and commuters, lower overall costs and allow flexibility for weather delays, and enhance safety and restore normal traffic flow hopefully sooner. Again, high-impact activities like pile driving or pavement demolition, jackhammering, those types of things will remain restricted to daytime hours between 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. So staff is recommending approve the proposed extended hours with one modification, and one modification, and that is to allow Sunday work only once per month from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Now, the county had shared some information with me that they had a work session with the city of Lake Elmo, and they are also considering one Sunday a month. So with that said, I would be happy to entertain any questions from the council.
Any questions? Ben, you want to start?
Why was the change from every Sunday to one Sunday? Why was that made?
Well, so last month, we heard some concern about folks not wanting work on Sunday at all. There was a compromise that the county, Washington County, had proposed to the city of Lake Elmo to work only one, or one Sunday per month. And so we're bringing forward that same recommendation. But that's certainly your prerogative if you decide not to have any working hours on Sunday.
So is it your understanding that Lake Elmo has approved that one Sunday a month, or is that just the proposal?
You know, I don't know that they have approved it, Councilmember Rog. I know they had a work session, and I haven't heard the results of what they've approved. And again, I know these hours are critical for the county's project to meet the milestones and to give them the flexibility. We all know or have been through construction projects ourselves, and we know that they're noisy and messy. And I think anything that we can do to try to expedite that process by giving the contractor the flexibility to work some additional hours to get it done sooner, I think is a good thing.
Ben Scott.
Oh, you got another question?
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I saw an email that they stated they probably won't be doing like early morning jackhammering during Sundays and things of that nature. So would that change that, or is that still staying in that kind of nature where it's not going to be too much of a disruption?
Right. So all the noisy activities, like I had mentioned, the jackhammering, pile driving, things like that, will be done during working, normal working hours, Monday through Friday. And the extended hours would mostly just be used for grading and paving and potentially bridge assemblies. So I hope that answers your question.
Oh, yes, perfectly. Thank you, Brad.
I know we talked about last time, perhaps speaking with residents that are directly impacted by this. Did we have the chance to do that, to see? Because I can understand they don't necessarily want this happening on the weekends, but at the same time, having this move faster along, they might say, yeah, let's do this because I'd rather have the construction period reduced. I'm just curious if you're able to have that opportunity.
Bingo. You got, I did have a chance to connect with one of the neighborhood leads down there that he printed out 40 copies and handed it to everyone along 60th and 67th, 62nd Street there. And I only received four responses from those residents. They were all in favor with the longer hours for exact reason you gave them this. So we'd rather deal with the little bit of noise, which isn't really incremental to the traffic anyway, and get the project done earlier and not have to deal with the traffic concerns with, due to the construction. So they're all, go ahead, John.
I was just going to ask, is it, is it your understanding that when we say that we're going to have these extended hours, that if it was just the grant hours from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, that would be the two years? And now it's going to be, you know, effectively an additional 20 hours a week? Does that mean that you actually complete it in a year and a half?
Yeah, I think that's the expectation, Councilmember Rog. Again, anything that we can do to help speed up that process. I know they're really under the gun to try to get at least one of the bridges completed over Lake Elmo Drive, so that they can use that bridge essentially to detour traffic. And so that's really essential to making sure that this project stays on schedule.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Go ahead. I got my questions answered. I guess I'm fine with one Sunday. And I mean, taking one hour off the heavy equipment time seems kind of silly from 7:00 to 6:00, but I guess if that's what they're going to do. But I'd be fine with the one Sunday. I agree, like you said, with the residents, let's just rip the Band-Aid off and get this done. And 36 is noisy enough, so. So you're making a motion? I would go ahead and approve the proposed working hours for the 36 Lake Elmo Avenue project.
Second.
Aye.
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 Hi, I'm sorry. All right, I've got another one for you, Brad. Consideration of the city's MS4 permit status. Could you walk us through that, Brad?
Yeah, Mayor, good evening again. Tonight, I'm here to provide an update on the city's MS4 permit status and recommendations for the next steps. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency recently reviewed our MS4 designation, and historically, grant was required to hold an MS4 permit because a small portion of the city fell within an urbanized area of 50,000 or more. That was based on the older census data. However, the 2020 census shows that no part of grant is in a urbanized area of that size, and we don't meet any alternative designation criteria. So the MPCA, MC, MPCCA, excuse me, has confirmed this and indicated that a petition for release would likely be granted. So if released, the city would no longer need to maintain a stormwater pollution prevention program, submit annual reports, or meet other MS4 permit requirements. This would reduce administrative costs and allow us to focus on other local stormwater priorities. You know, releasing the responsibility does not mean less protection for the water quality. MPCA would assume oversight responsibilities, and our four watershed districts would continue enforcing stormwater rules, which are often stricter than the MS4 requirements. There are a couple of future considerations, or two scenarios that could trigger redesignation. One is a petition by another party based on water quality concerns, and the second would be any future census data showing newer urbanized areas. So with that said, staff is recommending authorizing submission of a formal petition to the MPCA requesting reevaluation and release from the MS4 obligations. With that said, I would be happy to answer any questions.
So Brad, the MPCA reached out trying to reduce some of the MS4s that really shouldn't be, so this is more than likely will be granted if we ask for the petition?
Yeah, Councilmember Anderson, that is correct. They did reach out to us, explained it thoroughly to us that because we no longer meet those criterias, that we could petition them to relieve us of our MS4 requirements.
And then just one quick question. So not having to do the hearing and the other thing, is this some marginal savings on ours part over the course of the year?
Yeah, it's not a substantial cost to, you know, take care of the MS4 for the city of Grant. There's some engineering, but it's relatively a small amount. I want to say it's between $25,000 and $3,000 a year. That's what we annually spend on MS4 requirements for the city of Grant.
So I mean, we wouldn't have to hand out those pamphlets during the city cleanup day?
That would, that could go away if you would like, sir.
Save a tree.
Any other questions?
Can you think of any disadvantages of us removing this designation?
You know, Councilmember Crummon, I really, I really can't. You know, we've got four really good watershed districts that enforce stormwater management plans and rules that, again, often exceed the MS4 requirements. And again, you know, MPCA will be also assuming the oversight, so I just think less regulation in this case is probably best.
All right, so you're, Ben, did you have something? So you're looking for a recommendation from us? Is anyone being willing to make a motion to direct staff to submit the formal petition to the MPCA to reevaluate our MS4 status and release us from our MS4 obligations?
I'll do that.
I'll second it.
Aye.
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 All right. Next on the agenda, we have city planner Jennifer Swanson. Jennifer, we have the consideration of resolution number 2025-27, minor subdivision application for PID 25.030.21.13.003. Jennifer, is she on?
I'm here.
Oh, okay, we couldn't see your face. Okay, could you please walk us through this minor subdivision request, Jennifer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you this evening, as you indicated, we have a request for a minor subdivision or a simple lot split. I have a very short presentation that I prepared to walk us through it. So if you give me one moment, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen.
And then after she gives her presentation, then we'll open the public hearing.
All right, so it looks like, I'm just double checking to make sure you can see the screen. Just want to double check, can you see it on your side? It's not showing. There we go. All right, so this evening, we have the request for a simple subdivision. The applicants this evening are the autos. The property is approximately 20 acres, plus or minus. The land use and zoning right now, the guiding of it is rural residential agricultural. It is zoned A1. We did go ahead and notice a public hearing for this evening. In terms of the existing conditions of the parcel, the, you can tell from the aerial here that we essentially have a 20-acre piece, which is the identified parcel in blue. That subdivision, or that 20 acres, was subdivided from the larger farmstead, which extends all the way out to Manning Avenue. So the property itself right now is bordered on the south side by CASA 12, and that is its only frontage as it stands today. The parcel itself has been used for agricultural production for, as long as I can tell from the aerials. There are no existing structures on this particular portion of the larger farmstead or the parcel, and per NWI records, there are no wetlands on the parcel. The applicants this evening are asking for a simple lot split, parcel one, parcel two, both to be equal-sized parcels, so each of them would be 10 acres essentially, plus or minus. The applicants intend to develop their residence on parcel one and intend to sell parcel two, which is that, which is shown in green on your screens. The intent is that both parcels eventually would be developed with a rural residential use. As such, our ordinance requires that we review essentially the parcel to ensure that there's adequate buildable area, that a part, a developer, a residence, excuse me, can be developed to meet all the applicable setbacks, and that there is space for a septic system, and that is usually evidenced through submission of soil borings of where those primary and secondary drain fields would be. So you can see from the graphic that the applicant did provide a conceptual layout of how each lot could be developed to comply with all of our standards, which is shown both, on both lots, parcel one and parcel two. Staff conducted this zoning review to determine whether or not the conceptual plans, as shown, comply with our ordinance. As it stands, both parcels would comply. Obviously, we've got two fairly large-sized lots in this particular case. We do not have, obviously, the specific structures in this case, so obviously, the applicant and whoever ends up purchasing parcel two would be subject to our zoning regulations at the time of their application to ensure that they comply with all applicable setbacks. But as it stands, obviously, there's adequate area in which those improvements could be located. The applicant did submit soil tests for both parcels. You can tell by parcel one and parcel two that there is a designated area where those soil borings were conducted. You'll note on parcel one that it appears that potentially the drain field area encroaches onto parcel two. That area, it's obviously a little bit difficult because it's a large square that identifies where the primary and the secondary drain field would be. Staff just notes that we should have a condition that essentially says any specific septic system, design, drain field, et cetera, must be located on the parcel in which it is serving. So there might need to be some shifting that occurs to ensure that that particular system complies with that standard. Based on the soils, however, it does appear that there's adequate area, so staff doesn't have any concerns. It's just something to note with respect to the conditions. The other piece on this particular lot division is the fact that because the parcels abut and are adjacent to the CASA 12 right-of-way, that the division is passed by Washington County for their review and comment. Staff did, I believe, provide you or email you the response that we received from Washington County staff yesterday. The staff over at Washington County have indicated that they do have concerns with having two driveway access points to serve each lot, and that they would like to see a shared driveway or shared access point. That has to do with some long-term future improvements on the road anticipated on CASA 12. And so essentially, staff is suggesting that the applicant, as well as the city and the county, needs to continue to work towards that solution for the access. And in your conditions this evening, we've addressed it in terms of if a shared access is required, and that's what is needed from Washington County, which I'll touch on in just, just one moment. So as it's drawn, again, this is conceptual, so there's nothing that really needs to happen in terms of the concept plan itself. The lot line is really what we're concerned with this evening in terms of what gets recorded from a subdivision perspective. There are no concerns that were expressed by the city engineer. Again, they don't usually, Brad doesn't usually get involved at this stage of the game because we have such large parcels. His comments would come likely, once there's an actual development that's proposed here, you know, a residential structure, et cetera, where we've got actual grading plans that need to be reviewed from him. The agencies that do or will have jurisdiction over this in the future, once something is proposed, the parcels are in the Browns Creek Watershed District. So obviously, in terms of grading and site work, they'll have to obtain the necessary permits at the time of application for building permit. And then once again, we did receive those comments from Washington County. So we do know that they've got some initial concerns. However, it does appear that there is a solution that can be worked out, but I do know that the applicant certainly wants to do that as well, to determine access to both of them. There are several conditions that are in your packet this evening and also attached to your resolution. You'll see with respect to the conditions, the big one obviously has to do with that potential access and the shared driveway. Staff does recommend that we include a condition within that that states that if we end up with a shared driveway or a shared access point, that that driveway easement or shared access point be reviewed by the city attorney to ensure that the information in that easement is appropriate and ensures that there's perpetual access to both lots. And so once we determine what that access looks like and what the best solution is, if there is that shared easement, that the city engineer would need to review, or, excuse me, the city attorney would need to review it. The other pieces of the conditions are relatively straightforward and pretty consistent with what we typically see within a simple lot subdivision. Other than the access, there's not a huge concern from staff's perspective, and it does appear that the access can be solved. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the minor subdivision this evening with the conditions that are as noted. There is a draft resolution for you this evening, and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Greg, go ahead. So based on the letter we got from Washington County, the driveway is still in flux, we'll say, and the condition on there about regarding working with the county and the city stands, and we'll just keep that in the resolution. We don't really know what the outcome's going to be with the driveway? Just driveways? Yeah.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. I will say that typically, we actually don't get this level of scrutiny when we don't have proposed building plans, and we don't actually have driveway locations specifically identified. So this was just a concept plan. Usually, when the lots themselves come forward, or the proposed residential structure comes forward, that's when the access permit is obtained for the driveway. In this case, the applicant, it's my understanding, had actually communicated with Washington County before they ever even made their application to us as the city. So it got a little bit reversed, which is not an issue at all. It just means that we need to continue that discussion in whether it's a, if it's a shared access, we just want to make sure that that shared access provides perpetual access to whichever lot, you know, is crossing over the other. And so that's why that condition in there simply says that we should continue to work together. We need to come up with a solution, and then whatever is, we need to make sure it's memorialized and that there's access for both lots.
So the actual access will be determined in a future resolution when they decide to present building plans or whatever, is what you're saying?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that's correct. And there won't be a resolution necessarily. That's why my recommendation and what we've done in the past, if there's been a shared access that's required, that that private driveway, it's essentially a private driveway easement agreement that gets established for whatever portion that crosses over somebody else's lot, that we would ensure that that's reviewed by the city attorney to make sure that there's nothing in it that would allow, you know, the property owner whose parcel is crossing to take that away or withhold it from, from the other parcel or lot. So we just would want to make sure that that, that language was adequate and that the city attorney had the chance to review it.
Greg, one more quick thing. In the title of the resolution, Jennifer, is that east? Should that be west of Manning?
Good catch. Yes, it should be. Thank you.
She just threw that in there just to see if any of us. Somebody already read it? Yeah. Appreciate that. Good job. All right, anything else? We get a motion?
Move to open the public hearing.
Move to, move to, move to open public hearing. We have a second.
Second.
Public hearing is open. And just a quick reminder, the purpose of public hearing is so members of public can express their thoughts and concerns. The council does not answer questions or deliberately discuss matters during the public hearing. So anyone who'd like to speak, please remember to sign in with your name and address so we could properly record the minutes. Anyone who'd like to speak, public hearing? No one in attendance, anyone online? No one online? Oh, that was pretty quick. I guess we need a motion to end public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I move to approve resolution 2025-27 with the minor change from east to west.
Second.
Aye.
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 Right. Amanda, you're up next. Consideration of resolution number 2025-28, the Family Leave Act.
Yes, Your Honor, council. So this is the resolution that is adopting the required changes related to the Minnesota paid leave law policy, as well as meal and rest time breaks that were passed in statute this year that we need to adopt before the end of the year because they go into effect January 1st. So the policy is what the, what the statute requires in relation to Minnesota paid leave. And then there were some minor changes to the meal and rest break policy, again. And then there were some minor changes to the meal and rest break policy, again, as required under the statute. I'm looking for a motion to approve the Resolution 2025-28.
Any questions? We get a motion? Pretty much not an option we have here.
Yeah, there's not a lot to discuss.
All right. Move to approve Resolution Number 2025-28.
A second.
Aye.
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 Next one, consideration ordinance 2025-85, combining the roles of city clerk and city treasurer into one role.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, Council. So as you all know, your current city clerk and your current city treasurer will be done with their employment at the end of this year. Moving into 2026, Christina Hahn will be acting as both the city clerk, city administrator slash city treasurer. That is permitted under Minnesota statute, provided you have an ordinance that combines those two positions. So this ordinance combines those two positions as one. Under the Minnesota statute, it requires that there is an audit of the city's financials. Obviously, the city was already doing that, so that's not something new. So the duties are established under, you know, the same person for those same duties. The term of the office is for as long as the council wants to have it be a combined position. And that's pretty much it. Available for questions.
Motion?
A motion to approve 2025-85.
Second.
Aye.
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 Consideration of Resolution Number 2025-30, disbanding a personnel committee. I don't know if we did, even if we would have a resolution to officially do the.
Do.
But we're just making official now.
Yeah, we're.
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, so my understanding, I mean, we had a resolution to create the Personnel Committee at the November meeting. And then I believe my understanding is at the meeting that you had, is that last?
Twenty-first.
Thank you, on the twenty-first, you made a motion to dissolve the Personnel Committee. This is just putting it in written form, so we have a paper trail. So 10 years from now, we can figure out what we did.
And we can spin it up at three months if we have to.
Start it up, exactly how we did it the first time. Yes.
All right. Move to approve Resolution 2025-30.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so new business. Let's take the first two one at a time, and then the liquor licenses, we could, Amanda said we could do it all in one shot. So consideration of Resolution 2519, the final 2026 budget. We talked about the earlier share and had updated number for the resolution. I did not write that down.
Two million, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-seven.
Okay, I see.
That number.
And you're writing that down?
You said five, four, seven, five, two?
Five, four, seven.
Five, four, seven.
So Ben, would you like to make a motion to accept the final 2026 budget?
I would.
And recite that number that was just given?
I would love to. I motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-19 for the amount of $2,228,547 for our general fund budget.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Consideration of Resolution 2025-20, final 2026 levy. I don't think there's any of the change on there. We talked about it. I'll be ready for a motion.
Move to. Move to approve Resolution Number 2025-20.
Ben, second.
Second.
Aye.
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 So we got six. Do we need to read them all, or we just say the six? We could just say 2025-21 through 2025-26, make a motion, and then?
Yes, Your Honor, yes, Council, or yes, Mayor, sorry.
Second.
Your Honor.
Okay, so did you make that?
I just seconded what you said.
Oh, I guess I made the motion, and we got a second, okay. Aye.
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 Aye. Consideration of reestablishing City of Grant Planning Commission. Council had a work session back and made to discuss the potential reestablishment of the planning commission. The general consensus at that time was, logistically speaking, there were not enough land use applications to justify reforming the PC, but we wanted to kind of keep an eye on this to see when it might make sense to talk about potentially spinning up again. And I think, I think, I think we, during that work session, we came up with a threshold of like 75% of the time or eight months out of the year. I think that's kind of the metric we align on. Jennifer, still with us?
Yes.
Jennifer, can you give us an update on how many months of the past 12 that we've had at least one substantive land use application that would, you know, require a public hearing or anything that would have been relevant for a planning commission?
Yep, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there would have been, when I looked back, probably four, possibly five meetings, depending on if items were carried over, you know, between meetings, et cetera, just because of the timing. So somewhere between four and five months, four and five meetings would have occurred based on the land use applications that we received over the last year.
Okay. So I don't, Jennifer, I don't think you were in the work session when we were talking, or were you? You weren't in the work session, were you?
I was the night.
Yeah, so could you just give us a little bit of guidance and what your experience is with best practice for planning commission for a city of our size and application volume? Like, are we looking at this correctly with the arbitrary metric that we came up with for, you know, 75% of the time? Or like, what can you kind of share with us based on your experience?
Yes, so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't know that there's a correct way or a correct answer, per se. But what I can tell you is I've worked with a lot of planning commissions and city councils over the last 20 years. And the ones that are the most effective or tend to be the most effective are those that meet on a very regular basis because it's easier for them to get to know the code, understand what their role is, and not forget between meetings, it's out when you meet, you know, three or four times a year. It can be very difficult to do meaningful, good business in terms of understanding their role, understanding the discussion, understanding the ordinances. So the challenges I've had over the years really have to do with those commissions that don't meet as frequently as a result. The other piece that is challenging in that particular case is asking commissioners to hold their nights open and then having quorum actually be available for those. Because if they know that, you know, the potential of a meeting is maybe 30% or 25% at the time, especially during the summer months, which is also when we tend to possibly get applications, they don't always hold the meeting open because obviously, you know, they're going to a cabin or doing things with their families. And so it's challenging in terms of being able to get quorum, which becomes very challenging in a city such as Grant, where would they meet or we meet once a month? And so to balance those timing pieces, particularly when it comes to the 60-day rule, becomes extremely challenging to make sure that we're actually meeting those dates that are required. The, in the past, the city council here has made the determination that the planning commission really only meets when we have an active land use application. And there hasn't been a lot of directive on the part of the council back to the planning commission to have general policy questions or discussions. That's not to say that's right or wrong. That's just, over the last 15 years that I've been with the city, sort of how we've structured things with the planning commission. So those are some of the challenges in terms of if you have a commission that's not meeting very regularly and making sure that you have good productive discussions and have an effective planning commission. So I hope that answers your question. If you have anything, I'd follow up and happy to. Provide my two cents.
A follow-on. So when John and I joined the planning commission, we were working on the comp plan. And I think, John, I'll speak for you, chime in yourself. I think we learned more about land use and the city codes and everything, you know, working on that comp plan, which I would see, I would see that either some sort of citizen advisory group or planning commission or something would be needed if we get to that point. So how far are we away from potentially having to revise our comp plan based on whatever the Met Council's telling us?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we have received the, all cities, so not us, you know, because we're special or anything, all the cities in the Metropolitan Council jurisdictions received their system statements at the end of September 2025, I believe. And so basically, that's our first indication that the comp plan needs to be updated. Our comprehensive plan update to comply with that system statement will be due by December of 2028 because we need to have it in place by the time 2030 rolls around. And so there's usually a process to go back and forth with the Metropolitan Council. When that, that process sort of, you know, once you submit it to them, there's the six-month effective due some jurisdictional review, there's the Met Council review, et cetera. So they're due by the end of 2028. In the past, or I should say, the last comprehensive plan that I worked on for the city, I think we convened, we did use the planning commission in that particular case. To your point, several cities will actually use an advisory panel or similar if they don't have a planning commission that's active. Or even if they do, sometimes, you know, communities will choose to use an advisory panel to get a better cross-representation of residents, et cetera. So the planning commission doesn't necessarily have to be that body or that vehicle that works on the comprehensive plan. It also can be an advisory panel. I think the last time we did it, we probably worked on the update for, I would say, nine to 12 months. So I would think that in terms of budgeting and how we would look at it, it would be a 2027 project, possibly. I don't anticipate a huge revision in this particular case to the comp plan because I believe the system statement is pretty consistent with what we've already had in place for our 2040 plan. There's a couple of regional elements that still have to be updated based on the new regional policy. But generally speaking, I think it's going to be a pretty straightforward update in this particular case.
Kim, is there any other opportunities for planning commission, potentially, things to work on? Like if, I think at one time, we had a backlog of code that we needed to be reviewed. I think that was, was that done by the last?
Yeah, we finished all that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I mean, I'm torn. I feel like we definitely know that residents are interested in a planning commission, that there are people out there that want to get involved. The hard part is that right now, it doesn't feel like we have a big pile of work for them to do. And so that's where I feel like I'm kind of torn with the planning commission because we want to capture that excitement, that enthusiasm to be involved, to make, you know, a difference and get their impact and input in the city. But certainly can appreciate that when you don't do something, you know, every month or even every other month, it's like you're relearning every time, and that's hard.
Yeah. And, you know, I have the same kind of sentiment, you know, John and I, when we started out the planning commission, we were, we were tapped for that because we were coming to the meetings, we were, you know, getting involved. And so it would be nice for people that would like to serve in the planning commission, if you're out there listening to this, to just show up at the meetings and, you know, let us, let us see your interest and kind of get to know how things are going with the city and learn as much as you can. And then we can maybe gauge the appetite for people to actually volunteer and serve in the planning commission from people's actual engagement. So just a thought to share with folks out there that might be interested in this sort of stuff.
I think, I think from what Jennifer just said, it sounds like about this time next year, we should reconvene the planning commission so that we can look forward to some of the, you know, some of the land use applications as well as reviewing or redoing the comp plan. And that sounds like it's going to be a nine-month process, adding in all the land use. I think that's a, that could be a full year.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, so Jennifer, I think you said the end of 2028, so we'd probably want to start at the end of '27 or a little bit earlier?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I can give you a better, a better answer to exactly when I think or would recommend starting after I review the system statement. I've just done a very high-level review of it. I can't anticipate it taking more than that because I do think actually this update will likely be even less than what we did the last time because there's just not as much that's new in terms of. But at the last comp plan, we really did more of a full rewrite of it. And so I would anticipate this one to be more of an update. So I can't imagine it will take more than, you know, the six to nine months. And so, you know, to that point, it could be at the end of next year, it could be 20. Also, we, there's no harm, we could get it done early. There's nothing to say that we couldn't submit it before the end of 2028, particularly because I do think this one isn't going to take much to do. And to that point also, I'll just reiterate, you don't necessarily need a planning commission to do that. If you decide you have budget and you'd like to do it in 2027, for example, but we still have the same kind of, like, land use application workload, you could convene an advisory panel and have folks working on the comprehensive plan update without actually establishing a new planning commission. So like, if next year, we don't have that many applications, for example, we certainly have tools available to us to be able to appoint individuals who would be interested in that and do it through an advisory panel type of process that would be focused on that particular project. So just food for thought as we start to plan for it.
Okay, Lindsey?
I'd say that we maybe touch back in in maybe like March and see where we're at and just see, has anything changed with land use? Are we seeing a lot more in? And then if we're still the same, all right, let's touch back in in six, you know, another three months and just kind of keep.
Keep an eye on it.
Keep our eye on it.
Yeah.
Exactly. So we know that, and also that we make it clear to the residents, it's not that we're trying to stifle your involvement. We want you involved. We just want to make sure it's meaningful involvement and that we're using your time wisely.
Yeah. And I like the idea, Jennifer, of potentially utilizing, I mean, I guess I'm not sure what the technical differences are. Maybe the advisory board would just be more temporary versus PC, but, yeah. Kim, were you going to say something?
Mayor, council members, historically, and I believe it's still in your ordinance, that the advertisement for taking planning commission applications is done in December. And that's kind of what the city has done historically. And then by the time they get them, you interview, you know, application submitted, you interview, you appoint at your February meeting, they're in place in March, and that's kind of the timeline.
Okay. But we wouldn't necessarily have to do.
No, you do not.
To Lindsey, okay, all right. All right. Any other discussion?
No, I'd agree. Let's look at this here again in the spring. And I like the option of an advisory committee, but also it would give the planning commission another task. You know, when I was out there, we looked at some ordinance things in addition to land use. But I think the two years I was on there, we met five, maybe six times each year. And again, to Jennifer's point, it's kind of like, you know, learning the like again once you get back on there after three months off, and you kind of pencil that night in. And then when it's, we'd get the email from Kim, oh, it's canceled, it's kind of like, oh, great, well, now what do I do with my money?
Yeah. The comp plan, I think, was really valuable, too.
Yeah.
You know, get the experience working on that because I don't think we would have learned near as much as we did.
And I think we reviewed everything, whether it changed or not.
Yeah, went through the entire thing.
Entire thing.
The whole SWOT analysis of, you know, there's quite a bit in there. Okay. See where we at here? Consideration of Resolution 2025-29, Summit of Local Road Improvement Grant. I see we have Kurt here. We have, Brad, you still online? I think he is. Did he drop?
No, he's on.
Okay, Brad.
Yes, Your Honor, I'm still.
Just want to give a brief update on the collaboration that happened the last few months to get us to this point. And then maybe if Kurt wants to, we can, point of clarification, if, since Kurt is, we passed a resolution for him to help in there, we could treat him as like temporary staff, he could give an update, too.
Sure.
Okay. Why don't you start us off, Brad, and then Kurt, if you want to add anything, we can, we can jump to you. we can jump to you. Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah. Mayor, members of the council, the resolution before you is to submit the application to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for funding under the Local Road Improvement Program. This is a grant program that the, like I said, the Department of Transportation is funding. We are supporting or we looking for monies to reconstruct and rehabilitate McUsick Road between Manning Avenue and Delwood Road. And so, we've already received a resolution of support from Washington County, and so, this resolution is just having the city also show their support. This resolution is a requirement of the application process, so it's important that we get this done. I think the applications are due.
Two weeks.
On December 12th.
And then, we will, the the notifications, the notifications will go out April 1st, you said?
Yeah, that's that's what I understand, is that sometime in late March or early April, the announcements of the grant recipients will be made.
Yeah. Anything else from you, Brad?
Um, nothing more.
Kurt, I know you spent a lot of time on this, heard a lot of good things from from Brad and the folks at Washington County. Is there any updates that you'd like to share with the council residents or, and that you'd like to comment on?
Nothing really, I mean, we're, Brad and I continue to work on it. I'm trying to get it wrapped up. Do you want me to go over my mic?
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
I don't have a lot more to add, it's just Brad and I and.
Amanda and others have a few things to just wrap up, to get the package ready for submission. The 12th is the cutoff. I'm trying to get it done by the 9th, because I'm going to be leaving, and I don't want somebody to try to pick it up in the middle. So, we've got everything put together, we've just kind of been some final review and touch up on the application, and we'll try to get it submitted by the 9th. Well, thank you again for all your your work on this.
You bet.
Pretty cool. Any questions from?
You saying December 9th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, this week.
Good.
Yeah, already there.
Quick. Anything else, Sean?
Good. So, this is for McUsick Project? And what what are we asking for as far as our local share?
Yeah, Councilmember Anderson, this is for the McUsick Road Improvement Project. Part of the impetus is the improvements that the county has planned for the intersection of Manning Avenue. I think in '27 or 2028, they're looking at a future signal at that intersection, so some of these improvements would be to prepare for the signal at that intersection, including left and right turn lanes on on McUsick, on the the grant side. And then, the rest of, McUsick is also in the the application for pavement rehabilitation beyond the turn lanes. The turn lanes, the county had proposed or provided a drawing showing the turn lanes and and the improvements for for the intersection almost extend to Lofton Avenue. So, anything beyond Lofton Avenue, we were proposing to rehabilitate McUsick Road.
And Brad, just to to clarify the point you made, whether or not we did this project in a couple of years, Washington County would have basically ordered us to do our part on that that intersection there.
Yeah, typically, typically, when when the counties do intersection improvements, the local legs are responsible for some of those improvements, and so, in this case, you know, McUsick Road, to develop the the turn lanes and things like that would be the responsible of the city.
And Councilmember Anderson, you had asked the question on on the money side of it, and Brad, you might have it in front of you there, but it's just slightly over a million that we're requesting in the application. So, basically, all construction costs minus engineering costs? Right, yeah, it doesn't pay for, right, we'd have to, the city would have to be responsible for the engineering costs, and if the project were to go over the amount that we request.
And what's the schedule of spending the money, if awarded?
Money has to be spent during 2026, '27, and '28. Those three, we have until, you know, '28 to spend it.
So, if we win, we get the money, we'd we'd need to do the construction plans and specs, get those out for bid, so if that was something we didn't have in the budget, we could include the following year, and we could still get this, as long as we get it built and spent by '28?
Right, right.
Okay.
Yep. And that's and that's sort of the plan, too, is just to to get that award, then, that'll be March, like Brad said, and then, we would begin to roll that out with the the people on McUsick, and all the steps we have to take, and all the planning and all that, the bids and everything, and and then get it going, yeah.
And the county already passed their sponsor resolution, he said?
They did.
Good.
And we had that signed resolution.
All right. Well, thank you.
One more question, if I might. So, when you say that they're putting in these turn lanes and they're going backwards to Lofton?
Lofton.
And where's Lofton? I'm trying to figure out.
That's the road that the Gasthouse is on.
Okay, so so it goes.
It goes a little bit north.
Right, got it. So, that goes back to the Gasthouse, and that's Lofton. And so, the other people are putting the subdivision, they're going all the way to where, 88th, or is that, you know, so how much, how much?
You mean, where is the access point onto McUsick for that division?
Well, I mean, they're going that far and then a little bit more, probably. So, what's the gap between Lofton and where they're ending?
88th, I think.
You know, how much is that, you know, what's that distance, and how much is that going to be, Brad, roughly?
Yeah, we we talked about this last night at Brad's, McUsick, Brad, you want to take that question?
Yeah, Mayor, members of the council, so, the developer for the Stillwater Oaks is responsible for the mill and overlay between Delwood Road and 88th Street. And so, what's left between 88th Street and Lofton is about 2,500 feet, and then, you've got another 1,000 feet from Lofton to the intersection of Manning Avenue. Roughly, McUsick Road is about 60, or 6,000 lineal feet between Delwood Road.
But it sounds like the turn lanes and all that stuff is going to go back to Lofton, right? The paving from, the the turn lanes and the intersection and all that will go back all the way to Lofton, right?
That is, that is correct.
Okay. And what I'm saying is, so the remainder is 2,500 feet.
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So, considering the length of the road and what the city is on the hook for engineering, but the paving is Washington County, right? From Lofton to the intersection, right?
No, I think that's city responsibility, wouldn't it be?
Yes, it's, it would be the city's responsibility.
Yeah, the whole, the whole project is the city's responsibility, it's.
But I mean, we get money from Washington County.
No, Washington County is acting as our sponsor.
Yeah, we're getting money from the state.
Right, we're getting money from Mendoc, basically.
Okay, all right. So, that's, hopefully, we get that money Lofton to the Manning Intersection.
And then, we're asking about that piece in between.
Then we have that little piece in between Lofton and 88th.
So, that's what we talked about last night with the residents, and if we got, you know, two new sections of road on either side of that little bit, and the residents, for a reason, don't want to choose to petition that, then we'd be looking at potentially ordering that, because it really wouldn't make sense from a safety standpoint to have two new roads and then potholes in between, but, you know. Yeah, and Brad, and Brad, you might be able to react to this. I was looking, just tonight before the meeting, I was looking at your estimate, and I knew it's an initial draft, but it it appeared to me like that estimate takes it all the way from McUsick '96 all the way to McUsick and Manning, right? The the LRIP funds will pay for the whole mill and overlay and the expanded lanes and everything.
That's correct. So, in order to get the the turn lanes in, that portion of McUsick would have to be reconstructed, and I want to say that was about $600,000, or or we were estimating around $600,000 to reconstruct that portion of McUsick. The other portion would be rehabilitated between Lofton and Del Road.
So, unless our estimates are off, I don't think there's a gap in there for funding, like that 2,500 feet.
Right.
It's what we're proposing, or what we're asking for is money to do the whole thing.
Okay. From from state funds?
From state funds.
Excellent. That's what I was hoping to hear.
Yep.
Okay, great.
All right. Any other questions, or get a motion?
Move to approve Resolution Number 2025-29.
Second.
Aye.
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 Okay, I think we're all through new business, unfinished business, none. Discussion items? Any updates from staff?
Yes, Council, I do have one. So, just a point of clarification, I think it's already been said that this is Ms. Point's last meeting with the council, her separation agreement, my understanding is she has signed it, right? Yep, so it's signed, so we're we're good. Yep, so we're good on that side. One of the things that we had talked about in November was that her employment runs through the end of this month, so it runs through the end of December. However, depending upon the timing of getting a new person in, the intent was that she was not necessarily going to be working full-time for the entirety of December.
But she'll get paid through the end of December.
Correct. So, she, all of the, from an employment perspective, she is an employee through the end of the year, but daily duties to be deter, TBD, kind of, was what we had talked about in November. Now that we are here, I don't want to speak for for Christina, and I don't know if we should introduce her also, I think that she has not technically been introduced as the, so maybe during council updates, you guys can do that.
Or my staff update.
Or staff update, yeah.
You, you read my mind.
So, so we can do that, but I believe from from Christina's perspective, she feels ready to step in and take over, and so, the proposed language in the separation agreement says that Kim's duties will be done, daily duties will be done December 4th, because the office is closed on Friday, that would be December 5th. She will continue to be available via phone if there's questions, or, you know, where do I find this, or what's this kind of thing, through the remaining of the remainder of this month, provided that council is okay with that.
Yeah. I'm sure you'll be somewhere warm.
Let them eat, luck.
So, it's been a very smooth transition, really, thanks to you, Kim, for for that, and Christina, for being a quick learner. This is very, very quick, very smooth, so guys seem to work very well together. That being said, then Christina, Christina is our new city administrator slash treasurer, and she's already started. Christine, would you like to just introduce yourself a little bit?
Yeah, Mayor, Council, everyone, I'm happy to to be here in Grant. This is my fourth Washington County community, so I'm very familiar with the area and and a lot of the players, and so, that's made a smooth transition, as well as Kim putting up with my endless questions for the last month, or last week, maybe it's felt like a month, no? But, you know, live in, live in the area with my daughter, and so, you know, really close by, and and that's been, is an advantage, and I'm just excited to get to meet more people and learn more about Grant, and maybe do some changes we've already talked about, so things might start looking a little differently, your packets and whatnot, come come 2026, just to try and improve efficiencies and just other ways that I've done things. Always feel free to ask questions if you're wondering why something's different from what it was before, but that's really kind of the goals that I'm looking at as I approach this this position, is to to try and see where I can find some efficiencies and help you reach your goals, so.
Yep, and then, along with that, too, we'll be posting office hours on the website coming up in the next couple of weeks, so look for that, to be scheduled office hours.
Yeah, I got to kind of get my feet under me and know what the, how things run, so that I can make sure that I'm there, those posted office hours, but folks can expect to see them starting in January. Yep.
Mayor, council members, I'll just say, we've worked together for about a week, she's very experienced, she is ready to go, and I don't think the city could have made a better choice. She will do very well.
That's good to hear. Thanks, Kim.
So, do we just want to button up the last day for Kim?
What is it, four?
The fourth, right? Do we need to vote on it, or no?
I saw nods.
Oh.
Generally, I'm generally against it.
Yeah, we're good.
Because you've already granted me authority to get the agreement all wrapped up, but that was one detail I wanted to.
And I got to sign before I, okay.
Yep, thank you.
Brad, you start, did, was there anything to share after that Brown's Creek Watershed District meeting last month, where they're trying to get our input into their tenure plan? Is there anything?
Not really. We we talked about a few things regarding permitting and and the city's culverts and and things like that. The Watershed District is trying to update all their mapping. They were supposed to send me a drawing that showed the culverts that they didn't have information for, and I told them that I would reach out to either the Klein Brothers or Ken to to see if we can't confirm the culvert sizes and the, actually, the locations of some of them things, so that was about it.
Okay. Any other staff updates? I have a city, kind of a staff update, I guess, myself, so, as most of you know, I'm representing Grant as the Cable Commissioner for Ramsey, Washington, Southern Community Channels Cable, and I've been on the Finance and Personnel Committee, and I've been appointed to the Executive Committee as Secretary, so that's a, that's a change for me, and also be working on a strategic plan. So, one of the the gaps that I saw when I joined the committee is they were kind of rudderless in terms of their strategy, and so, a couple of us got together and decided, well, it might be a great idea if we had a strategic plan, so we could work on the long-term sustainability of the Cable Commission, because most people know cables die and so, so death, and we need to be proactive with the Cable Commission and look at new ways to generate revenue, like, look at ourselves as more of a media company rather than just strictly cable, and cut along those lines. Christina, if you ever see some franchising requests coming for broadband, let us know, because the the Cable Commission has got some some thoughts on how to respond with that, they're working with member communities to to potentially take advantage of of some franchising opportunities, and I know people say it's, you know, it's it's a hidden tax, but it's something that we could look at in terms of generating revenue, and so, if you if you come across any application like that, we'll just bring it to the council, we can, and also, I'll get you in touch with the the folks from the commission that can get you up to speed on that much more than I could.
I've watched that YouTube video that they were on last month.
You already did.
I might have seen it in my last city, just before.
Okay, well, you're one step ahead of me. That's all I got, time for community calendar.
I was going to ask one question.
Oh, go ahead.
We had, you know, done a great job so far, initiative grant, of getting fiber optic to a lot of homes. Are we going to complete everybody at some point?
So, they did share a month or two ago, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, that update, I think you shared, did I have you share that with council?
Yes.
You check your, yeah, that should have been shared, we can have it shared out again, the latest update on that. But they're, they're not super specific with their 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 maps, and, you know, so they kind of give you a high-level statistics, but as terms of specific households, I don't know if I've seen that level of detail yet, but they're they're getting there.
The idea is to get the whole, the whole of Grant covered, eventually? Every household?
I'm not sure the whole of Grant, I don't think that was part of the, Kim?
Mayor, council members, it was to get as much of Grant covered as possible, based on the grant dollars that were received.
48,000.
And the ARPA funds that the city donated.
Yeah, so, good answer. I think it was like 248,000 or something like that, grant money.
Mm-hmm.
Community calendar? Run all at once, we'd like to read it. All right, I'll read it.
Glasses are on.
Modem Media Public School Board Meeting Thursday, December 11th, Modem Media District Education Center at 7:00 PM. Stillwater Public School Board Meeting Thursday, December 11th, Stillwater City Hall at 7:00 PM. Washington County Commissioners Meeting Tuesdays, Government Center, 9:00 AM, and for those of you who didn't know, Christmas Day is Thursday, December 25th, 2025.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Sorry.
Aye. Thank you, Kim, and Sharon. Thank you, Kim, and Sharon.